John, where are you?
I think we should get started.
Yeah, I agree. Let's just go ahead and, yeah, I think we'll just, if someone has John's personal phone number, give him a text, but we'll get started. I concur with that.
Alrighty, in that case, due to the ongoing public health emergency of COVID-19 and to comply with the executive orders issued by Governor of the State of New Jersey, this meeting is being held via Zoom. Pursuant to Section 5 P Public Law 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by the publication of the news record, posting the agenda on municipal website with required meeting access information and by filing said notice in the office of the municipal clerk. This is a regular meeting of the board. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McGeehee.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Bolden.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Larrier. Mr. Pashoda.
Here.
Ms. Ward.
Here.
Ms. De Noozer.
Here.
And Mr. Titus.
Here.
Okay. Whereas, Section 7 provides that the Planning Board has the discretion to permit, prohibit, or regulate the active participation of the public at any meeting. Whereas, it is desire of this Planning Board to comply with the provisions of this act and at the same time to conduct this business in an orderly and expeditious manner. Now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Board of the Township of Maplewood that it does prohibit, except as set forth in the formal agenda, active participation in the deliberations of the Planning Board at all of its meetings.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Yes, hearing no nays. Uh, this has been moved. Um, I'd like to hear a, uh, I believe we've all received the regular meetings minutes from, um, July 14th. And is there a motion to accept the, uh, the minutes of July 14th? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Um, the next, um, agenda item on, um, the next item on the agenda, excuse me, is the election of a chair. And at this point, I'd like to turn the, uh, process of the election over to Mr. Edelson to run. So, Sorel Edelson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Um, at the request of Mr. Bolden, as Vice Chair, acting in the absence of the Chair who we lost, uh, to his untimely passing, we are required to elect a Chairman to the vacated position and that would be for the unexpired term, uh, of Mr. Ryan. So I will now entertain, uh, nominations for the position of Chairman of the Planning Board of the Township of Maplewood, uh, for the unexpired term, uh, of Mr. Ryan, which would run until December 31st of this year.
Mr. Edelson, I would like to nominate Karen Pashoda for the position of Chair.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Do I hear a second?
I second that, Ms. De Noozer.
Okay, do I hear any other nominations?
Move nominations, we close.
Do I hear a second to the hat motion?
Second.
We have a roll call.
Mayor McGeehee.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Bolden.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Ms. Pashoda.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Ms. De Noozer.
Yes.
And Mr. Titus.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, would you kindly, uh, cast a single ballot for Karen Pashoda as Chairman of the Planning Board of the Township of Maplewood from today's date through to December 31st of this year? Congratulations, Ms. Pashoda.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate the confidence, uh, of the members of this board. I realize that Jerry's passing was a great loss, not only for this board, but for our entire community. His knowledge of Maplewood was truly encyclopedic. I suspect that, um, I'm not alone in saying that, you know, most of us can only aspire to know Maplewood with the level of detail and affection with which Jerry did. So while I can't comment to bring his great wit and humor to our proceedings, I certainly hope to emulate, um, his, his leadership and the way he helped us and guided us to pragmatic solutions for the matters that came before us. So thank you all again.
Congratulations.
Well, the meeting is now yours, Madam.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, so we just have one order of business before us this evening, an ordinance review, uh, and to-
Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may, you will need to do a nomination for your-
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
I don't know if you need to or not, do you?
Yeah, we don't, as long as, as long as Mr. Bolden is agreeable to remain as Vice Chair, there is no vacancy and he just continues as Vice Chair.
And I wholeheartedly hope that Ed will continue in that capacity.
Uh, yes, if that was a question raised, yes, I will.
Wonderful. Then we don't need to actually go through an election process?
That is correct.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ed. I'm excited to work with you.
Good point to it.
Um, I apologize for skipping over that. Um, but moving on now, um, we do only have, uh, one piece of business before us this evening, which is the ordinance review, uh, for accessory dwelling units. And, uh, to start the discussion on that, we already see materials on that, which I'm sure you've taken a look at. To start the discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor McGeehee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. I want to say a couple of things. One is that this, uh, ordinance has been in the making for a long time. Uh, several of my colleagues, including, um, Ms. Adams, who's present on the phone today, has, uh, been working toward trying to find a way to help our seniors age in place. Um, and I know you've had opportunity to read the ordinance, but it's, as we've said in other TC meetings, because you know, we had a different uh, version of the ordinance, which we scrapped to make sure it aligned with our planning board. But still, the, the narrative of the ordinance is the same, you know, and it's really focusing on trying to find a way to help our seniors age in place. And it's a phased approach. I mean, we're looking at a certain particular age right now. Uh, and as we continue forward with looking for ways to keep Maplewood affordable and provide these opportunities, we'll, we'll add on or create additional ordinances to do as such. But I think this is a great start. You know, a lot of work went into this by Mr. De Luca, uh, Mr. Daffis, as well as Ms. Adams, and I will be voting in favor of this ordinance.
Mayor McGeehee, did you want to, um, invite Township Committee member Dean Daffis to talk a little bit further about the ordinance?
I'm more than happy to do that. Um, or he could also, you know, if he wants to, you know, have, at the public comments section, he can also speak as a member of the public as well. But I did want him to be there here tonight. Um, well, actually, he was, he said he was going to be here tonight. I thought, since he was going to be here tonight, I thought it would be great for him to, uh, if needed, to speak on it because it, you know, it came out of a lot of hard work that, uh, he did as well in addition to Ms. Adams.
Sure.
I'm happy to jump in whenever you're ready for me.
Well, do you want to, do you want to share some of the broad strokes about the ordinance and, and how it got to this point? So that people have, um, some members have a little bit more color aside from the ordinance itself?
I'd love to, and thank you for the invitation. Congratulations, Karen. Really excited. You're going to be great. Uh, and, uh, good evening to everyone. It's good to see you all, as it were, uh, and happy summer. I'm sitting out on my deck, so forgive the cicadas, which are being, uh, exceptionally vocal tonight. They're excited, uh, about our planning board meeting, I guess, or whatever it is on this hot summer night. So, yeah, I want to give some, some context. I was a champion of this, um, of ADUs in our community, uh, for quite some time now, and I want to give you a little bit, walk you through how we got to where we are today, as Karen said. Uh, a couple of years ago, AARP, uh, gave us some advice and they asked us to, to look into this model, uh, which is being used widely in other suburban communities here in the Northeast, but, uh, even more so out in California, where they have, uh, really perfected the model as an affordable housing option and as an aging in place option for our seniors. We had just come off of a couple of surveys that we did, community-wide, uh, and a senior survey. And the number one concern that our seniors said that they had about their community here in Maplewood is, uh, not having options to, uh, to remain in place, to age in place. Uh, they're on a fixed income. Uh, we see that every year with the state budget, the senior tax frees and the homestead rebate, rebate, excuse me, get scrapped or, or, uh, less and less money available in those programs. Our seniors aren't a fixed income. And, uh, but they built this community and they want to stay here and we want them to stay here. So we started looking into different models that would help us do that, uh, providing affordable housing options for our seniors beyond just low and moderate, uh, affordable housing. Uh, and this is the model that came up. We wanted to know more about it. We, we wanted to do more research. Uh, the Grotta Fund, which supports our SOMA Two Towns for All Ages, uh, you know, Two Towns for All Ages Health and Wellness Initiative in South Orange and Maplewood, connected us to Opticos Consultants in California. They're, uh, they're out of Berkeley. And, uh, we flew them over here and they did a presentation for us about ADUs, which they call the Missing Middle Housing. Uh, and, and so that's how we got to learning about ADUs and figuring out how we can make it happen in our community here. Uh, because this came from an aging in place perspective, we started, we thought that we would start a pilot. This is what this ordinance is, a pilot. Uh, offering, uh, our seniors either as the ADU occupant uh, or as the owner of the home using an ADU. It's not restricted to seniors, therefore. Uh, a senior homeowner, for instance, can certainly engage in rental income by renting out an ADU to an incoming family in the community and vice versa. Uh, allowing a senior to, to rent an ADU attached to a home from another family so that they, so the senior can, can age in place. That's how we got here. Uh, it was recommended by AARP. We, we got the research through the Opticos Consultants in Berkeley, California, and we, we remained engaged with them uh, throughout the ordinance. Yes, the ordinance that we ultimately put together before you this evening, uh, resembles, uh, the old Tapan ordinance. Uh, they've had one in place for quite some time now. Uh, and we recognize that there's room for improvement on the ordinance, uh, as far as we, you know, when we get into some of the technical aspects of it, I, I do want to bring to your attention that we did revise recently the ordinance to allow for the ADU occupancy to survive the sale of a home. That was really important to bring us in line with state tenancy laws, uh, so that we're not doing anything illegal there or inconsistent. Um, and I also want to say that a lot has been said, uh, by critics out in the community that this ordinance is possibly discriminatory. Uh, we also know that, that that's not the case. Age-restricted housing is legal. Uh, it is constitutional, so long as there is a rational basis to what you're doing. Uh, and I think I've explained the rational basis already by giving you the context uh, in which we've been, you know, putting this together. So those are some of the thoughts that I have. I'm happy to answer any specific questions as we get further in the discussion. Ms. Adams has been, um, you know, involved as well using her Planning Board extensive knowledge uh, as it relates to lot coverage and height and some of the other technical requirements, uh, behind the ADU. But, but those are the broad strokes, as Karen said. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I just might, um, just add on one thought. We talked about this at many Code Enforcement Committee meetings over the past year. Um, like we do with most things we bring before the Township Committee, most ordinances, to just kind of, what do we want? What are we trying to do? And most importantly, in this case, I think, because I, I think a red flag that goes up in people's mind is that it's going to change the character of our town. With respect to how many, how, what's on a, on a lot, right? Like to what Dean was referring to, is just making sure that we don't go in opposition to our own ordinance with regard to lot coverage, which we asked a couple of years ago, am I urging to keep, uh, McMansions from happening on our, on our small lots? So we don't, we were very cognizant of that through all this discussion. So, um, that's all I just wanted to add.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may just, uh, focus, uh, the board a little bit, um, and I don't mean to interrupt the flow, but, but the responsibility of the board, when the governing body refers, uh, a zoning ordinance or an ordinance involving zoning to the board is to identify any provisions of the ordinance which may be inconsistent with the master plan and to provide recommendations concerning those inconsistencies and any other matters as the board deems appropriate. So when we are done with this discussion, uh, we are going to need, uh, a motion which indicates the board's feeling as to whether there are any provisions in the ordinance which are inconsistent with the terms of the master plan and any other recommendations which the board may deem, uh, necessary. I, I just want to remind everybody, uh, that regardless of what the board, uh, determines in regard to its recommendations to the governing body, uh, those have to be forwarded to the governing body within 35 days of the referral. And the governing body need not follow the recommendations of the Planning Board if a majority of the full permitted membership of the governing body votes to disregard those recommendations. So now you know the whole, the whole statutory scheme.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Uh, are there any members of the Planning Board that would like to share any thoughts or concerns or comments with respect to the ordinance?
My only comment is I do not believe, I remember working on the master plan many years ago, and I do not believe there is anything in the master plan that would prohibit what is being proposed. That's my only comment.
Um, I'd also like to add, I think our last reexamine was 2011 and we're required every 10 years. So we are approaching time to do a reexamine. So I think exploring this, you know, for, you know, this is a pilot. I think, um, exploring it further through a reexamine process would be, would be good.
I think that's a fair point, Liz. Um, you know, again, I think, again, the phase approach and what Mr. Daffis laid out as well as Ms. Adams, you know, we're moving in the right direction. And so I think that's, you know, we've got to get somewhere. And I think that, I mean, this has been, I've been involved for four years and I've heard about this for all four years. So this is a great step.
I have a question, a question for Mr. Daffis. Um, Dean, the, uh, the, I'm aware that, that you've gotten a lot of information out of, um, legislation in California. But if I'm, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, that's a statewide mandate. That was the legislature and the governor to put that together. Is anything like that envisioned in New Jersey or are we going it alone here in Maplewood?
Actually, uh, thanks for the question. I'm glad you brought that up. Actually, the Builders Association of New Jersey promoted, uh, this statewide a few years back when, uh, we had Christie as our governor. And, uh, and it, and Christie said absolutely no way and it died, uh, a very slow death, a very quick death, I should say. Um, but this is something that the Builders Association certainly promotes. I also want to add, uh, Tom, and this is probably going to be music to your ears, because I know you're, uh, you're, you're very knowledgeable about these things, your years on the Planning Board and, uh, you know, you, you get into the details. The, the land use law, uh, you know, there's a question about whether or not, uh, we can do, we can bypass or should bypass the Planning Board, excuse me, when you're doing a conditional use like this. And the answer is, our intent wasn't to bypass the Planning Board. I mean, certainly no lack of transparency or accountability like that. Our intent was not to create something that would create an unreasonable burden or create an unintended inequity. So that only people who can afford a site plan review and all the expenses that go along with that in this entire process can do it. We wanted everyone to have access to doing so. So, uh, you know, I, I did some research on our land use and I talked to some of the people that I know in Trenton, uh, through my DCA contacts, and I found out that if we were, if we needed to, we could amend our local land use ordinance to exempt ADUs from site plan review so that the zoning officer can review the plans so long as, you know, the ADU followed all the conditions that we have in the ordinance. Uh, but, but that sort of gives you also additional context and color, as Karen said in the beginning, as to why we went the way that we did and how we got to where we are tonight, speaking to you. I, I hope that's a little bit helpful.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Um, I did want to say that I am very happy to see the township moving towards looking at ADUs. So I think that's good. It's been like, you know, very popular movement and planning across the country, not just California, but Oregon, Minnesota, Maryland, Virginia. So, and we're not the only ones in New Jersey. Um, I know Morristown has ADU and there's a couple other places. So I think we're in good company by doing this. Um, I think this is probably too much details and things, but, you know, some of the, like, 120 days for construction or 180 days to complete construction, I just, I'm, I know the supply chains right now are insane. I, we tried to do, we tried to even get a refrigerator and it was like six months out. So there might be, you know, some leniency in some of that language that you might want to think about right now during these times.
Is that COVID-related, Liz?
Yes. COVID-related, China-related, just construction in general has become pretty difficult in some projects then.
I actually have a question. Um, given that this is a pilot program and is meant to be a phase in, um, how many of these do we envision having or, or what is the, what are the limits? Because I don't recall reading in the ordinance about a specified number of these that we anticipate approving or anything along those lines.
We don't, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so there's no cap per se, Karen, in terms of, we don't, you know, it's, it's hard to predict, uh, finite number. Um, you know, that would be maybe a relatively good problem to have. Uh, but there's no, there's no finite set about the, the number, uh, that we'd be willing to entertain or, or even like, you know, the complete length of, uh, the, uh, the pilot itself would be.
I just want to add, um, I don't, I don't want to mislead anyone. While this may be, um, like something that we don't think is necessarily perfect on the Township Committee, um, maybe that's why it's being referred to as a pilot, but it's an ordinance. You know, that we can, of course, get rid of or change, just like all ordinances. But, you know, if we're in a pilot, we wouldn't be passing an ordinance necessarily. So it's, I think, I think that, um, representation is mostly just to say, um, that the Township Committee, at least in our dialogue about this, was not, you know, we're very much in favor of doing this for all the reasons that Mr. Daffis stated. And, um, we want to try to make it work, but we're not necessarily blind to, there might need to be some tweaks going forward, but it is an ordinance, right? So it's not, you know, just a pilot program that's going to go away after a certain number of months. It's going to be in the books. So I just didn't want to mislead anybody like that, but I don't know if I'm misspeaking for you, Dean, that I think that's what you meant by it from our discussions, that we, we're not like 100% sure we got it 100% right. And so we know that we're going to go into this and then possibly have some tweaks to it going forward.
And, and I just have a question to add to that then, if it is sort of a test run. Have we built into this a moment when we do a full-scale assessment, uh, to determine when those tweaks and modifications are needed? Um, is there a language that would say within six months, 12 months, whatever is an appropriate time to have participants and to measure and monitor? Do we have that language to sort of ring the bell, raise the flag?
No, but the flag can be raised, just like flags are raised with any ordinance or anything we do, you know, as a, as a Township Committee. Um, we can address things that we're seeing evidence of. We talked a lot at Code Enforcement Committee, which is our zoning official and the head of, of that department, along with, um, you know, our attorney and everything to try to work through everything and sort of see, see what we don't know yet. And that's true with almost everything we do, we, we pass. We try to find all the nicks and crannies. We try to see unintended consequences. We try to figure out whether, but it may not always be visible before we put something in place. Now, Dean, did you want to add anything to that?
Nancy, I think you've covered it really well. It is a pilot. It's a test run, um, as Ms. De Noozer mentioned. Um, and, and that is how we're going to find out where we need to make more tweaks uh, and where, uh, the needs are, how it works and how it doesn't work and who can do it and who cannot and why. Um, I will say that our zoning officer reported earlier today that we've received a lot of interest already. Um, like, not just I'm interested, but I'm ready to do this. How soon can I start? So, so, you know, this is a sense of urgency. Uh, again, I, I want to hearken back to our state budget, which will be revealed later this month by the governor. Um, and I think our seniors are going to take a major hit again. And, uh, we're going to lose people and, um, we don't want that. They built this community. They add a lot of value to our community. We wouldn't be here without them, the rest of us, and we want to find ways to keep them here. And if this turns out, as it evolves through the pilot, to be indeed what we want it to be as an affordable housing option as well in other ways, then we will build upon it and expand it. Uh, but we got to get started to see what works and what doesn't work, and that's what we hope to do.
I, um, I, I appreciate the, um, Nancy, that you're framing it as, you know, there's concerns about the unforeseen, uh, consequences. And, and I understand that the urgency, Dean, and, and certainly the need. And, and I think ADUs are, um, have so many wonderful things going for them that could be of great benefit to the community. Uh, so I commend the Township Committee for sending this to the Planning Board. I, I do think it's, um, a planning issue, uh, because it affects both use and form. And, and I think, you know, um, that's where hopefully we can be of some help tonight, talking about both of those things. Um, because I'm not convinced that there, first of all, that there aren't conflicts with the master plan, which, um, you know, talks about housing stock protection. Um, you know, one of the amenities of our community is its historic, uh, homes. Um, and the master plan- And the master plan notes that 95% of the properties in town are, are single family. And that that's remarkably consistent. In fact, there was only, you know, at the time it was written, you know, four, you know, variances from, uh, from that. So my, my question, you know, this seems to me effectively to create, to turn every single family lot potentially in town to a multifamily lot. And, and there is also language in the master plan about residential conversions. And that, uh, you know, conversions from single to multiple dwellings are discouraged. So how, how does, help me kind of reconcile those two things? The housing protection of our historic stock and the discouragement of conversions to multiple families that, that are in the master plan.
Dean, did you want to answer that or you want me to go into it?
I wasn't sure who, who was supposed to reply. Thank, thanks.
I guess it's just an open question, but those are my like initial comments and.
Totally understand. Yep.
So I'll take a crack at it and then Nancy, if you want to back me up. So Tim, thanks for the question. It's a good question. I think by limiting the amount of people that can reside in the ADU is one way that we ensure that we're not creating a frat house, as Vic has been on public record saying. Or creating, as you said, multi-families. But, uh, you know, if, if we have, for instance, if I wanted to build one in my backyard to house my mom and/or my father, I don't think that that would be necessarily inconsistent with single family house and/or in changing significantly the, the character of our suburban community. And that's why ADUs have become so popular and not very controversial for that matter, because it is a way to create more housing without disturbing the essential character of a suburban community. Nancy?
Wow, you flipped that to me so quickly. So I, I think I would go back to the, the, the issues that we brought up with the age restriction. And that at least somebody in, in either the main dwelling or the ADU needs to be my age or older. And, um, that also means, you know, and that's also why we talked about the lot coverage as being a big deal. And that's also why, you know, some of us are referring to it as a pilot and some of us are just saying, you know, we may need to revisit certain things for those unintended consequences. And that's because we don't know this is all new ground and it's very different than the master plan in that regard. The master plan's already out of date, as we know, with regard to the percentage of single family homes that's changed a lot over the last 10 years. So, um, so I, I think people are going to also, and we talked about this at Code Enforcement. People are going to also focus a lot on the value of their property and their house as to what they do to it and what they, you know, I guess we're not foreseeing everybody turning their garage into a rentable space. And that's sort of one of those unforeseen consequences that we've been kind of referring to. And that's one of the reasons that the age restriction makes, uh, makes some sense aside from that's where we started. We started with the age restriction because we wanted to help our seniors out. And we wanted to help people who have parents who, who can't stay in their own homes, whatever town they live in. But are not ready for, you know, especially nowadays, like to put, to, I was, actually the only reason I was glad my dad passed away already was so he wouldn't be in a nursing facility during COVID, right? So I think there was, there's those, those things and to open up the ability for someone to make a first love, like a floor, a, a single story, if you will, applicable. Like I couldn't bring my parents into my house if they couldn't handle the stairs because I only have one bathroom. So, you know, those kinds of things, try to, try to make it easier to, to help people.
And let me just, let me also add something here too, this is Mr. Mayor Frank. You know, the charm of, and the restriction on age is key because really the charm of our town is not actually the homes, it's the people that live in them. And the people that live in them make the carriage of our community and they're actually being priced out. And this is an opportunity for them to stay and for others to come. So I, I also look at it from a holistic perspective, not just as a physical structure, but also the, the charm and character of the individuals who make the lifeblood of our community as well.
Wholeheartedly agree with, with all the benefits, both in, you know, social benefits, sustainability, equity, economic benefits. There's so many wonderful reasons. I guess just to, if I could still continue to play devil's advocate, that it's, a, a lot of the responses are about imagining families, that it's a part of an extended family. But there is nothing that I read in the ordinance that precludes renting to a third party. And with up to, I think it's three people available to reside in the ADU. I mean, it's also, right, this is designed to work both ways, right? That the senior citizen can live in the main house or in the ADU. So it's an income if they're renting out the ADU or vice versa. But it, it is definitely, um, you know, I, when I think about, I think when we talk about it and as I'm hearing this conversation and I went back and, and, and have been listening to all the Township Committee meetings on it. A lot of it is imagined as a granny flat in the garage, right? But there's multiple types of ADUs. You know, in a, in a basement level, as a bump out addition, as a roof level addition. And some of those could dramatically alter the physical character of the structure, meaning additional doors, right? Cause you have to have a separate means of egress. Presumably there's, you know, a, a real fire rating separation between the units. Are those, you know, I guess the, the flip side of this is like it, you're, you're offering the potential to increase property value. And that may attract developer speculation and the kind of teardowns that we want to avoid. So this is all leading to a, a single word in the ordinance that says a separate dwelling unit constructed within an existing detached one-family residence. So is the intention that these additions cannot happen for the purpose of ADUs, but it must be within an existing shell of a building? Can, can you help me understand that part?
First, can you, I just, just hone in on where the ordinance is kind of long. What, what page or section is that in?
That, that's on page two, uh, under the definitions. A separate dwelling unit constructed and, and ADU is a separate dwelling unit constructed within an existing detached one-family residence or accessory structure.
Tim, I, I, I agree. I, I think it's clear that the ordinance, the way it's written now is requiring ADU to exist within, somewhere within the existing footprint of either the house or the existing accessory building.
Would you say, Tom, that that would then would permit an addition, but within the same footprint? Like if you were within the other bulk controls of the site?
So if you did an addition in the existing, like main, main.
Knock a dormer out of the third floor or something?
Like build over a for, a one-story addition, make it a two-story addition.
Right, which is permissible regardless of the ADU. As long as it, it, it meets the height and, and lot coverage and everything else. Right? So, yeah, I mean, there's, I don't want to say this publicly. There is a house not far from me that did years and years and years ago, like a second story above their second story that was like an, like a full floor dormer that in my humble opinion, from design perspective, doesn't look good, but within the plan.
I mean, I guess that, that there is no change to zoning here. Is, is, is that correct? Like this is not, you're not actually proposing that the use is now an accessory use permitted in these districts. You're not changing the zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
I think that's correct.
I think, I think there's some, I think there's some disagreement on that, Tim.
Agreed. And that's, and that's part of the disagreement we had at the TC or maybe it was Code Enforcement as to whether or not this needed to come before the planning board. But, and it's precisely for those kinds of questions that I, I wanted it to come here to.
So I, I guess that would kind of be my thought is that you, there's a lot of physical implications to the, this ordinance. Right? So if I have an existing garage that's a single car garage, that might be only 300, 400 square feet, which is a very small ADU. Zoning may or may not permit me to increase that depending on my lot size. I, I know definitely there's that 16 foot height cap. So you're never going to get a granny fat flat above the garage. And so like I start wondering, well, why not? If we're serious about encouraging this, why wouldn't you change that to say 20 feet? To encourage two-story garages and then you preserve the, you understand? I mean, this is just an example, but.
So basically just allowing height changes to encourage that while still keeping the, the land coverages and lot.
Well, I'm, I'm not, there could be lot coverage or, you know, bulk changes as well. But if you're looking to incentivize this, there are ways, there, there are other ways to control it via zoning. That I, I don't see yet, like it's not a part of this ordinance because you're not looking at the, at changing zoning. But it feels to me like very much like a zoning issue. And that those are the kind of physical controls that you might want to look at in, in order to, that we facilitate the, a type of architecture that is consistent with our neighborhoods, our historic neighborhoods and, and, and fabric.
Interesting. And that's why we want to bring it here to get those kinds of, that kind of input and, and can address those concerns. And I don't know that we're going to address them with this version of this ordinance.
Agreed.
It may be something.
I would agree.
It may be something that we'll, we'll address, like I said before, in the future, and maybe we want to see how this is utilized, what the popularity, if you will, of it is before we make those kinds, because we were very cognizant of the same issues that, you know, with regard to lot coverage and height of trying to keep the characters, I said before, so as to not run into those. So we kind of kept that a little bit out of it for that reason. But I agree with you completely and it may be something we need to address.
There, there are many ADUs ordinances through the country that sometimes take even stylistic kind of controls and say, this new addition should match the house or contrast the house or, you know, whatever is.
Like a historic preservation, you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Like a historical preservation, okay.
Exactly. You know, it's, it's all about, uh, the way I think it can be squared with the, the master plan is by having physical controls that help ensure our historic housing stock is protected. And, and that doesn't mean that you can't make revisions, of course, like people today, as of right, can make all sorts of revisions to their home. But I think it's worth acknowledging as the master plan does that what is in part attracting people to this community is, is the historic architecture stock and not, you know, we have not been kind of overrun with teardowns and McMansions. So, um, but if you, if you offer a way to dramatically increase property value, like perhaps ADUs, are you going to encourage teardowns? I, I don't know, you know? I'm not sure, like that, I think it's a more complicated, I think it's a complicated question. And, and you guys that have been looking at this for a long time would know better than I am. I'm just, and I'm new to the ADU world, so I'm not, I'm just asking questions as it was brought to us about the physical and, and use of things with.
Tim, can I ask you something? Is, aside from all that, all those complications and, and a lot was going through my mind while you were speaking and do you think this is consistent with the master plan as, as it's? Or do you think that there needs to be revisions made to the ordinance to make it consistent?
Well, I mean, my opinion would be that you're, by having, by permitting multiple dwellings on a single lot, we're in direct conflict with the master plan. But I, I'll also say it's not a, a black and white question. When, when I look at the, um, you know, I, I think there was, uh, 17 different objectives listed in the master plan, that kind of conclusive objectives. And of those, five of them were approved by this ordinance. You know, that we're promoting seniors aging in place, that inclusivity, potentially affordability, all sorts of these wonderful things that everybody's been talking about. And three potentially are challenged or slightly undermined. And those really tend to do more with the preservation of the housing stock and this residential conversion issue. So the conversion issue, I think, you know, I'm not sure how, how that one's squared necessarily, except the way that it was answered, that this is actually a subset, it's a smaller, you know, it's 30% of the whole house. And so you're not actually dividing it into two equal houses. You're not increasing FAR. You know, so I think, okay, that's probably works. The historic side, I think, is a big question mark because I don't think we yet know what kind of architectural forms may emerge from this. It depends very specifically on where people might want to put these additions. Right? If.
Right, except, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Point, if I may.
Actually, Dean, could I just say one thing? The historic part of it, Tim, is, you know, such a major question. And it's arguable for hours upon end in a conversation, if we choose to spend the time, about what's historic and what's not. You know, years ago, um, when they were subdividing lots with my houses that were built in the 1920s and subdividing the lots and putting up in the 50s and putting a split level in between two 1920s houses, that was probably not well received by a lot of people, right? And then you also have, but now those are mid-century modern historic houses on, in some people's mindset. So, um, I don't necessarily agree that this leads to teardowns or would, because I think, um, I think the ordinance kind of speaks to that with regard to the accessory dwelling being part of, I'm sorry for my computer, being part of the, um, the ADU, be, being inclusive, the ADU. So I think that is where in my mind it kind of, uh, because I was the same way, even when we were talking about allowing solar panels, which I have on my almost 100-year-old house, as to how that would impact the look of our historic homes.
Right.
For the same reasons. Um, so I think there's, yeah, like I said.
You're right. You're right. You're making me kind of think that it is very subjective and these are, it's not like they're, every house in town is historically designated as significant and protected by landmarks kind of laws. So, um, you, you know, I think the short answer to your question is no, there's not necessarily, there's not necessarily a overt conflict that can't be kind of, that you can't argue.
Right.
A counterpoint to. So I guess, you know, take, take my comments more as just trying to foresee those unforeseen conditions that you were talking about earlier on. Cause I, I do, I do, I don't want to misrepresent. I, I very much appreciate and support this. I just want to, you know, help ensure that the development that ensues and, and it's, it's wonderful to hear that there's a lot of interest already is done in a way that is, you know, contributes to our community in a positive way.
Sorry, Dean, I just, I, yeah.
No worries, and thank you. I just want to say that I agree with Tim that physical controls are good. And we already have physical controls that are necessary as conditions with all kinds of construction in town. But once we veer off and start talking about design standards and historic designations and what is historic to you and what is historic to me and that subjective standard like Nancy mentioned, I think then we're creating an unreasonable burden, an unfair one with respect to ADUs, one that we don't apply with other construction or remodeling in town of existing homes, not tear downs, not reconstruction, but rather extensions and other things that people get through the zoning officer without adhering to design standards, without adhering to whether or not what they're doing is in keeping with the character of their house. I mean, if we had that, that would be so wonderful, but we don't have that. And, and I don't think that it would be fair to start with this. So, so yes, some physical controls, yes, but design standards and historic designations, I think that takes us off track of, of, of what our focus should be, at least at this stage.
I would agree, Mr. Daffis. I just want to, when I hear historic, anything historic, I cringe. It's such a complicated animal, just for our main municipal buildings as it is. It causes a lot of logistics, red tape, and sometimes inefficiencies from a cost perspective. And I think when you start some historical neighborhood designations and things like that, or any type of like, single-family homes, you get into a, a lot of red tape and a lot of incremental process and create walls, which kind of contradict what we're trying to do today, so.
I, I guess I would just say in response that it's, it's not just historic, but it's about, according to the master plan, protecting the scale and character of existing housing stock, which is considered a valuable community asset. And so you, I think this ordinance, we may find that it's going to increase the bulk in buildings, because it won't all be, because people can't build over the garage, they're going to look to build elsewhere, either as an addition to the main house or on a second floor. And that's going to add bulk and it's going to add front doors and access. And there are implications here above and beyond style.
I agree, and that's what I think we want to keep an eye on it for because, and that might be something we want to look at, Dean, was, is whether or not we want to change it with regard to the height, like being able to build over a garage might be something that we might want to consider. And part of that, Tim, was also making sure we weren't letting people build bigger things to have this, you know, as reference for animal house dorm life-like stuff. So, you know, it was that playing with, trying to, but you're right, I mean, you could end up with, with houses that have like, that look like two family houses in a single-family zone. There's one not far from me, and prior to this, they had, people had to go for variance for that, or come up with an excuse that made it, bless you, whoever that was, that made it, you know, acceptable from our zoning perspective. So I, I really appreciate all your thoughts on this. And I think it's something we need to keep in mind as we move forward, for sure. And, and yeah, the, the word historic gets some people upset, but it's relevant and it's not necessarily historic. I think character is a better way to, to think about it so that we keep the character that we all moved here because of. And, you know, as much as it is the people in the homes, it's also the homes themselves. They can't, can't be discounted. I mean, there's a whole reason it looks something, so.
That, those are really my whole comments, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm taking up a lot of the conversation here. That, I, I just had one other technical or language question on the ordinance on page three. It refers to item 3A. One ADU shall be permitted as a conditional use in any residence or in any existing garage or structure, et cetera, et cetera. It goes on to list the zoning districts that it's permitted in. And R24 is one of those zones. That is already a two-family zone. But then later on in that same clause, it says, the residence for which the permanent sought shall be a detached one-family residence. So that, to me, appears to be a conflict within the text.
Except that not, not every house in a two, in the R24 zone is, is a two-family.
Yeah, it's, it's permitted to put a single-family house in the R24 zone.
Right.
I see, understood, thank you, I didn't capture that.
Well, it's not obvious, but that's, that's, that is a characteristic of the R24 zone.
Well, somehow when you say it, Tom, it, it makes obvious sense to me.
Not when I said it, apparently.
I'm not.
Well, you get enough credit.
I can't come out ahead on that one.
Are there any other members of the planning board who have, who want to express any thoughts with respect to the ordinance?
I got a couple of comments. First, I'm supportive of the concept of ADUs and I'd like to see it evolve and work out. I do believe, however, there's about 99 ways from tomorrow that there could be unintended consequences. So I really encourage your governing body to be diligent in, in the enforcement and administrative aspects. And, and Dean, I know you just said you've made some improvements in the, in the rights of tenants, that sort of thing. I just think there's a lot, a lot of moving parts. With respect to the master plan, I was going to bring up virtually verbatim what Tim brought up. That if you look at those objectives at the beginning of the master plan, there's a handful that would support this, especially affordable housing, and, and a handful that would seem potentially contradictory regarding aesthetics, housing character and that sort of thing.
Let me ask.
I was going to say one other thing. Ms. Ward is correct, we are due for our reexamination of the master plan, which is a, a process that's, that seeks a lot of community input and starts off with identifying trends and changes that have occurred since the last reexamination 10 years ago. So I would think this topic would be front and center when that process starts, either this year or next, whenever it's scheduled.
Just a question, I guess is more regarding the process. When you go back, when this goes back to the council and they make their township council, they make their comments, changes and et cetera, I'm assuming that we will be able to see this in that, in that final stage? Before passage?
Well, if they, if they make substantive changes to it, yeah. Ms. Wilson could comment on that.
Right, but if we, if we pass it pretty much as is.
Yeah, if you're changing wording to clarify it, stuff like that, it doesn't, that doesn't.
And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about change in wording, but if there were changes in, in the plan, I'm like, I don't want to characterize them as being major, but if it is different than what we have, what we have currently are reviewing, would that be presented to us?
So that would be, right, Tom? If, if there's, I mean, what, what happens?
If you have to go back to another first reading, then yes, you'd have to send it back to the planning board.
Correct, because if we change it too much, we have to. And, and you can identify any concerns or issues or opinions that this board agrees on in the memo that gets sent to the township committee after this meeting.
So are we at a point now where you can make a decision? I mean, we've had a good kind of discussion.
I think the public needs to.
I think there's some members of the public want to participate.
Yes.
Yes, I did, I did note that in the, in the chat room, I think Ms. Lewis turned the chat room off, but that's.
Yes, so, so if there's no one else from the planning board who wishes to share any comments, then I'm happy to open it up to the public. And given that Ms. Sejor, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, had started with some questions in the chat room, if she'd like to start. If other members of the public would like to ask questions or share comments, I'm hoping that we've enabled the raise your hand function, because that can be very useful and we can call on people as they do so.
I would be, I would be happy to just make a comment. I had already sent my comments to both the township committee and the planning board earlier, a couple of days ago, so I think you guys know where I am with this. The question that I was asking in the chat box was whether it makes sense to have the Historic Preservation Commission look at this, you know, relating to the comments that were made about the character of the town. We don't yet have the historic residential district like Milburn does, but there, there is some interest in preservation of our historic homes. So I was wondering about that, and, you know, I could actually preface all that by saying I am, as most of you know, totally in favor of the ADUs. I had a lot of questions about the ordinance and about the exclusivity of it being for seniors only, but I, I am in favor of them. But I just, I just was wondering, you know, Dean had said, why would they have jurisdiction? I, I don't think that, that Historic Preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission would have any jurisdiction at this time, but I think that their, their input on this might be quite valuable to these important decisions that are being made.
I, I would just answer that in saying that they're welcome to come to the planning board meeting. It was advertised, it's on the agenda and it's, the ability of the HPC to come to us is just like anyone's ability to come and, and presumably they're paying maybe more attention than maybe just the average resident might. So we haven't heard from any of them, by the way, at least I haven't.
Would it, would it be valid to invite them to the conversation and include them in this, in this discussion, whether it's with the planning board or the township committee? Rather than waiting for them, you know, to come forward with an opinion? Why not include them in the discussion?
Again, I just reiterate what I just said.
I'll answer that question, because I don't want to be passive about this. I don't think that there's reason to invite their input. I think the Historic Preservation Commission has a mission, it has a charter, it has duties that are clearly defined by state statute. And I, I just don't think that this is within their jurisdiction. If we had a historic designation, if we had historic neighborhoods, then we would, as we do when we're working on our historically designated public buildings. We always, always must go through historic preservation. So I would say that we have not made affirmative plans to seek their input and do not plan to do so, but they are welcome to provide their.
And sorry, sorry, Mr. Daffis, may I add to that, 100%. I, I, again, I want to repeat myself for the second time that I am very reluctant to involve our historic preservation in this process. Again, we've had some challenges with them in terms of municipal buildings and the process themselves. I do not think that they are to be part of this conversation, period.
I'd like to just add that I think that if there were a homeowner with a home that has an historic designation that wished to invoke this and add an ADU, then that would be an appropriate time to involve them. But as a blanket involvement for something that's going to affect specific areas of town, I don't, I don't see a need to.
Well said, Chairwoman, well said, exactly, historically designated homes, of course.
That's a good use case, and I concur with that, but generally blanket, absolutely not.
I actually think that if you're creating a new use, the more, the more people involved in the discussion, the better. But, you know, I, I see what the attitude is, so I, I won't pursue it. Thank you.
But I just wanted to say that they can come to the discussion. So if, if they, if they want to be heard, they can come to the discussion. If not, there's no precedent in the sense for them to be invited, so.
Makes sense. All right.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that as well, it's, it's not an attitude, it's just facts based on historical, no pun intended, relationship with the particular area that we're discussing, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly, I understand that Julie Bernstein, and again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, has a question. Please, if, correct me if I'm mispronouncing your name, and also if you could give us your address. Traditionally, the planning board has asked members of the public to share their street address when they're, when they're, you know, speaking during the public comment section.
Certainly, you pronounced my name exactly right, and this is my husband, Mark Maven, and we live at 71 Oakview, just up the street from the town hall. And we've been here, we've been in this house for 22 years and in Maplewood for 23. And I want to start just by extending my gratitude to all the people in the township council and all the people here on the planning board who are considering this. I think that this is so important, especially at this moment in our history. And I speak from personal experience, because when the pandemic hit, our little house became the home to our 25-year-old son and my 87-year-old mother. And it was clear within the first few weeks that Nancy, like your house, the bathroom is on the second floor, and that was hard for her. And as we struggled through that, we realized my mom is probably not going to be able to live in New York City where she lives now for much longer. And we would love to be one of the pilot test cases to create a one-story dwelling for my elderly mom who has, is losing her sight and has a tremor. And this would be a way for us to be able to keep her independent as long as possible, but close by. And so I'm just really grateful, I wish this had happened after Sandy, because our garage was destroyed in Hurricane Sandy and we could have done it then, but it's great that you're doing it now, and I really hope that this passes. And again, I'm just so grateful to everyone who's spent so much time thinking through all these questions, and even now, thinking through the questions that we'll start contemplating if and when we can build something on one floor for my mom. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who want to address the planning board? Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Tebby had raised his hand, I apologize. Please, again, correct me if I've mispronounced your name, and please share your address and then your questions or comments.
Tebby's actually the correct pronunciation, so that's great. That's usually like a 1 in 10 shot with that for most people, thank you. I live at 37 Brookwood Drive, zip 07040. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the comments by the mayor talking about the town being about the people who live in it and not just the houses. I think that's, I think the question to be asked here is what kind of town do we want? I, I think the issue of affordability is really key here. And if you have, there's this whole issue of, of towns in this part of the country that become unaffordable, except for a very narrow range of people, which leads to lots of people being kept out on a whole lot of basis in terms of class and race, but also age is part of that as well, so trying to address that, I think, is really important. And so I'm really much in favor of this, I, my wife actually has a family friend who lives in an arrangement like this, and it's allowed her to be aged with great dignity. It's been wonderful for their family, it'd be great to have it here in Maplewood. And I would just say that, again, like I think we should really be thinking about this in, in the broader term of what the trade-offs are, like we want to have more affordability. I couldn't afford to, I moved here in 2013, I could not afford to live on my street, which is not an expensive street in Maplewood, if I was trying to move here now, I just couldn't, right? I think that that's really our priority. couldn't, right? I think that that's really our priority. I understand people talking about historic preservation. I'm actually a trained historian and a history teacher, so I love old buildings. But like, I know that my home is a 1920s cookie cutter house. I think we should be aware of being overzealous with historic designations, right? Certain buildings obviously should be protected, but I fear that the trade-off between some buildings, some houses not looking like the most aesthetically pleasing and us having a lack of affordable housing, I think it's a pretty clear choice over which option we should take. And just say, I would just want to reiterate, I just, I see a kitchen sink approach to affordability in Maplewood, like throw everything we can at it. I think ADUs are one thing. I think, though, that looking at changing zoning restrictions across the city and allowing for more multifamily housing is essential because, again, housing costs are going in for seniors. They're going in for everybody in this part of the country because we simply don't have enough housing. We just don't. And I think that that has to be a priority if we want to think about this town in terms of the people who live here and not the buildings that live in. So that's what I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance or ask questions regarding it? Okay. I don't see anyone else at this time who's interested.
I have my memories.
Oh, I apologize. Who's that?
This is Edgar Galvez from 37 Boyden Avenue.
Go ahead.
Just had a question for the committee, as well as the Township Committee members, about, you know, there was talks about introducing this ordinance in phases and reevaluating it over time. I know there has been some members of the public who are voicing their opinions for lowering the age of residents for ADUs. And my question, to be exact, is what would the Township Committee members need to see in order for them to consider or lower the age restriction that currently is on the ordinance?
I'll take that one, Madam Chair, if that's okay. You know, I think, again, anything, when you have something that comes out initially, you have to look at the people who are applying, right? It's data. We don't have data. And the only way we get data is for people to apply and make a decision in regards to, or apply and be interested in doing, engaging based on the ordinance. And so to that point, we need to see who's coming in. We need to see who's coming in and saying, oh, the age is below 62, or where the case may be, and that'll help us rethink. So it'll be very fluid. And as we talked about the phase approach, as the previous member said, this is about equality and making Maplewood affordable and livable again, especially for those who want to age in place and age with grace. So I think it's just a question of timing and process. And so at this point, there's not a finite answer again, but we will look at it. We'll be looking at the data and using the data to make thoughtful decisions.
I would add to that, that yes, seeing whether or not there's interest or desire in the public to use the ADU for a different age group or dealing with that. A lot of times on this planning board, we evaluate things in some ways because the chair of the zoning, we had a specific example a couple of years ago, remember Tom, where the zoning board chair came to let us know that we were, they were getting a lot of applications for relief from part of the zoning ordinance. And so we looked at it again and then made changes appropriate to that or recommended changes to the Township Committee, and then they made changes appropriately so that, you know, and that's sort of where you see that data, right? That's where you see what the community wants. And then, of course, like everything else, we have to weigh what's best in our humble opinions and with our knowledge and background and experience, what's best for the community. So I think data is number one, and we will see that in many ways, whether it's through the zoning office or through the zoning board. I'd like to ask Madam Chair to open it up to vote.
Well, I think at this point, and Mr. Edelson, correct me if I'm wrong, what we need to do is not so much vote on it, but come up with our comments for the Township Committee with respect to inconsistencies with respect to the master plan and any other concerns that we have, right? We don't actually vote on it. Is that correct?
Well, you vote on what you want to put in the memo that you're going to send to the Township Committee, but you are correct. You're not voting on the ordinance itself. You're pointing out the inconsistencies, if you find any, and you're making any recommendations that you might think are relevant to make.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, that comment is very helpful. So at this time, I guess I'd like to open it up. Oh, and let me just check. Adele, I realize that I don't think I can see who has raised their hands. So are there any other members of the public who raised their hand that we did not get to?
I don't see anyone.
I have one question. Nancy, your comments that you just made were interesting. So are you implying that a person who is under age 62 could apply for a variance to this ordinance? Is that what you're saying, Nancy? And so, because I'm curious as to how you would get this data if the ordinance says that you can't apply for it if you're under 62? Are you saying people could go for a variance? I'm trying to understand what you were saying.
I would say that, I was saying, some of the ways we get the data is when there's demand for something that's against our ordinance. So I'll defer to Michael on this, but I would assume that anyone who wanted to do an ADU and needed any part of that ordinance, relief from any part of that ordinance, would go for a variance before the Board of Adjustment. Am I right?
You are correct, Nancy.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. So at this time, I welcome comments on what we want to go back to the Township Committee with, with respect to inconsistencies with the master plan or other concerns we might have collectively about this ordinance.
I think we've raised some of the issues regarding the inconsistency with the master plan. We have township council representatives here who have fully heard what we have stated. I trust that they will take that before the Township Committee and let them know of our discussions. Or, if you prefer, you could have it jotted down and send them a memo or letter or a note.
Yeah, I think a memo is typically what we do. Adele will draft it up with the input that we provide right now. And I think we ought to cite the items and the objectives in the master plan that Mr. Fryett identified, both the positive and the potentially threatening ones or conflicting. And I think it would also be fair to say, without taking a vote, that there was general support for the concept of ADUs among Planning Board members.
I would agree with that.
Anyone else have?
I have just one comment, and I think that we definitely need to bake into this some specific time, months, years, whatever it is, so that we have the opportunity to evaluate it. I understand that the Town Council can review whenever, but I also think that there's a sense of urgency, which we all respect, and we love that we are the type of community that will prioritize the needs of people and not necessarily historic property. That's fair. But we also need to give ourselves a buffer so that we can say, it's been X amount of time. How is this affecting property values? How is this being approved? What are we seeing? We just need to bake that into this program.
Is that within our purview, Mr. Edelson?
Oh, you can recommend, if you want, the Township Committee to consider that and to consider whether that would be appropriate, a sort of sunset provision. But as Nancy has pointed out, it really isn't necessary. The wonderful thing about municipal governance is you pass an ordinance and you find that it's not working the way you hoped, and so you repeal it and you pass a new one. And you really don't need a sunset provision. But, you know, it's up to the board as to whether or not you want to include that as a recommendation to the Township Committee that they should consider adding a provision that this is going to be revisited at a certain time.
Well, I think it'd be part of our soon-to-be future reexamine process.
Yeah. I think it's built in already, as you pointed out earlier.
And I just wanted, because I read it as 62 and older, somebody in either the main unit or the accessory unit. But there seems to be now an idea that it could be younger, or is that something that was, maybe we should look at that as well? I'm just a little confused about that age thing possibly changing. Because to me, I thought the purpose was keeping seniors in Maplewood. You know, Dean mentioned the whole AARP thing and so on. So I just wanted, maybe there was some clarification. Somebody could make a couple of sentences. Is there a possibility that someone can come and say, well, I want my kid who just got out of college to live on the property because of A, B, C, or D reason? Or someone from out of town is looking for a place to live, and, you know, I have this additional unit on the property, and it's affordable to them what I'm charging, and they can live there?
Frank or Nancy, do you want to address John's concerns?
I mean, if the board agrees to put that in the letter to the Township Committee recommending that we reconsider the age part, then that can go in there. But whether or not the TC amends it, I don't think there's an appetite to amend it at this point. But it can definitely go in the memo if that's what the majority of members of the board want.
I have nothing to add to that. Nancy's spot on.
Okay. So it's open to age, is what we're saying?
Oh, that's not, that's not how I'm hearing it. It is 62 and over either in the primary dwelling unit or the ADU. But if at some point the Township discovers that there are a number of people who are seeking a variance or seeking to use it in a different way for younger people, then they would address the ordinance at that time.
Okay. And that's the data Frank was, that's the data Frank is talking about?
Right.
Okay. I'm good.
Mayor McGee or Ms. Adams, did I fairly represent that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So at this time, it sounds like the only thing that we really have to share with the Township Committee is the items that were outlined by Mr. Fryett about both the things that this ordinance would do to support the master plan, as well as those that represent potential conflicts. Are there any other thoughts that anyone has with respect to comments to go back to the Township Committee?
I would just add to that, that as it is a change to use and potentially form involving physical changes, unforeseen perhaps, but I think altogether likely that it should be something that the zoning board might look at as a part of due diligence.
Michael, that's not something that is typically done with ordinances, but the zoning board doesn't usually evaluate it. Am I right?
Good reason. Oh, that's agreed. But I, as I read this, and I may be reading it incorrectly, the ADU has to be within the existing detached one-family residence or in an existing accessory structure or garage. So if they're going to put an addition, it doesn't, and I don't know for sure how it would be interpreted if somebody wants an added floor, but if there is going to be an addition to the building that would require, and it violates some other provisions of the ordinance, that would require them to go, depending upon whether it's a bulk variance or a used variance, to the Planning Board or the Board of Adjustment. So.
Correct.
I don't think, you know, I mean, my, never mind.
Yeah. Just to clarify, the intent is really to uncover the potential zoning and code conflicts that may come from this. For example, light and air. If you're now permitted to occupy the rear of your yard close to the lot line, you're not going to have residential windows that may not have legal light and air close to your neighbors. You know, there's a lot of physical implications that I personally would recommend that we include in the memo as something that is considered as a part of this process.
I don't think we need to go before the zoning board. Just that's why. I don't think, well, I respect the comments that Mr. Fryett made on that, but since we're requiring that all setbacks, height, well, you know, lot coverage and everything else, so I just don't see that as a realistic problem personally. But again, so I don't, but I don't think it's, if you want to put in the memo to the Township Committee that there's concern about these things and maybe recommend that it go before the Board of Adjustment, but yeah, that's up to the board, this board to decide.
I don't want to confuse things, so you'll forgive me, and whoever's listening can ignore all of this, and I, and I don't want to second-guess the analysis that went into concluding that this could go to the construction official and that the construction official could decide all issues involving the construction of the ADU. I think that that may very well be in conflict with a specific provision of the municipal land use law, which says a conditional use is maybe granted by, what it says actually is, the governing body may adopt an ordinance giving the Planning Board jurisdiction over conditional uses. That is interpreted to mean that the Planning Board and only the Planning Board has jurisdiction to grant conditional uses. If the governing body wants to revisit it with their council and their council agrees that that is a concern, that may solve the problems that we're talking about because there would be the usual kind of analysis on the application that the boards make that we're concerned about not having. So I just throw that out. And I don't think this is something that goes in the memo because the governing body apparently has made the determination. because the governing body apparently has made the determination that they have the authority to delegate this to the construction official. I'm only suggesting that that, maybe that ought to be revisited, and if it is revisited, and it has to go to the planning board, although I'm sure everyone on the planning board would say we don't need all that work, it may solve the problem of some of the concerns that we think might arise under this ordinance. But I, I don't think you need to put that in your memo. I can, I can call Roger and talk to Roger about it and see whether he thinks that makes any sense. Then he can talk to the governing body, and the governing body can decide whether they think that makes any sense.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea for you to do that, Michael, to call Roger about that. I do want to reemphasize the point that my colleagues on the TC made, which with regard to not making this an onerous and expensive proposition to the very people who are seeking relief either from their property taxes with the additional income or by helping an elderly relative, so.
Well, there's other ways to do that. I mean, you could simply by ordinance say that there are no fees involved in an application for an ADU. I mean, okay.
No, no, I like that. I mean, that's because that's our main hesitation is not to.
All right. You know, I'm going way beyond what I should be doing.
That's okay. It's nice to hear so much from you tonight.
I like that idea. I like the idea of waiving any type of additional cost when someone is applying for an EDU. I think that will remedy the level of urgency that we have here in that, you know, there should be some safeguards and some guardkeepers and some guardrails to make sure that we're going down the right path. But I love the idea of saying we can waive those fees that they would incur to have all the proper evaluations waived in this matter.
I have a question. Mr. Edelson, in your scenario where instead of a construction official, it would be the planning board, because this is a conditional use, does that mean that every ADU application would have to come before the planning board? Is that, is that correct?
Well, yes.
Okay. Yeah, in which case I would also be an advocate for the idea of waiving those fees.
Right. But I still think it's onerous to require that. So we'll have to go back and look at our municipal land use and possibly exempt ADUs from site plan review or create this as a permitted use, as Mr. Edelson will discuss with Mr. DeZedario.
Yeah, the real problem here is the question of preemption of a state statute. And so, and I think, you know, Roger has to advise you on the meaning of that and whether that's true. Because the last thing you want in terms of cost to everybody involved is if somebody wants to challenge this and say, all these things are wrong, you can't do it because it was preempted by the statute, it's going to cost everybody a lot more money. So it's worth at least my talking to Roger about it and you guys deciding.
Thank you. That clarification is also very helpful. So at this time, I think the only thing we really have pending the outcome of Mr. Edelson's discussion is still the items that this ordinance has that are, the ways in which it's either supportive of or in conflict with the master plan. Is there anything else anyone would wish to offer for consideration for the memo?
And I feel, this is kind of, as we're talking about, we don't want to make it onerous. Having like a signed affidavit every year listing, you know, the name of the person that lives there and having a $500 fine, I mean, that seems a little punitive as well. So maybe you should revisit the process of, you know, checking up on people, I guess.
It's fair.
Hi, guys. I was just, I was actually going to stay out of this whole conversation since it's my first time. But you can just put a restriction on the certificate of occupancy, which will direct the owner and whomever else wants to illegally use it for something else that they cannot. And then I guess you could find them if they do use it for something illegal down the line.
Agreed.
Seem easier than having an annual affidavit. All right. So at this time, we have two things that need to be included in the memo to the township committee, as I've outlined, the item, the ways in which this ordinance either supports or is in conflict with the master plan, and a recommendation that we, that the township committee reconsider the signed affidavit and perhaps utilize something like a restricted certificate of occupancy instead. Can I have, I think we're ready to vote. So can I have a motion that we send those things to the township committee for their consideration?
Go move.
And second?
Well, we both, we both, we both moved it, so you have a second.
That's fine. All right. So Ms. Lewis, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Bolden?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Fryett?
Yes.
Mr. Larrier?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. DeNoozer?
Yes.
Mr. Titus?
Yes.
And Ms. Pishoda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. So at this time, if there are other members of the public who would like to address the planning board on any issue, please let us know. Please unmute yourself. I see there's still some members of the public. Please unmute yourself. Give us your name and your address and share any comments you might have. All right. With no one coming forward then, I think we're ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Great job, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Congrats, Karen. Well done.
Good night, Nai.
Night. Night, Ed.
Good night now.
Say goodnight.
Good night.